Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, June 21st, 2021. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are the republic of which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Administrator, have you had a chance to take role?
I have in honor present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Where do you see the consent agenda? Are there any questions or concerns on the consent agenda this evening? There are no questions or concerns. Can we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I make a motion to pass the consent agenda. Do they take it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. Want to just mention this evening a little bit about the Lions Club Park reopening that was this past Friday. With a great community turnout, we celebrated the opening of the new Lions Park and the splash pad this past Friday. This was truly a community-driven project. Long in the making and we very much anticipate all those people who, I'm sorry, appreciate all those people who had donated time, money, and resources that helped us redevelop the park. Their names were mentioned Friday during the ribbon cleaning ceremony and they are included in the agenda as well. I believe the improvement will continue to inspire additional public and private investment for downtown and I'm truly excited to continue to make, push to make Carney downtown a destination and help feed our downtown businesses. That concludes my Mayor's remarks and we'll move on to the Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to publicly announce that as was approved at the June 7th executive session, contract has been executed between Russell and Amanda Mossberger and the City of Carney to purchase the house at 103 South Clark, the property to be added to the Lions Park property for future development. That resolution that was adopted is 132021. That's enclosed in the agenda packet. Thompson Title will handle the closing and those that will happen in due time. We still haven't got a preliminary title report. So some things need to happen.
With the federal government shutting down, I noticed, I know at least my closings all got abruptly halted.
Anything recorded?
Yeah. So I think companies.
Oh, that's right. We had a day off on Friday, didn't we?
Some of us did.
Some of us did. Some of us did not. But I know my sister was supposed to close that house today and I got pushed back. One thing I'll mention there, Mr. Administrator, is we'd just like the board to think of ways we can continue to improve the park there. It's an exciting opportunity and appreciate the board's unanimous passing of purchasing that property. I personally like the idea of additional pickleball courts. But you know, share some ideas with the Parks Department and our Parks liaison and we'll continue to expand the park there.
Mr. Mayor, our next regular board meeting will fall on July the 5th, which is generally a, will be the holiday that we celebrate. So city halls close on July the 5th. So pursuant to our board policy, we would hold it on July the 6th, Tuesday. So I wanted to make sure that that was what everybody expects to be done.
Is the board all available on Tuesday, 6th?
Good. And then the trash service will be collected normally the week following the 4th. They do not recognize the 5th as a holiday. So everybody who is sleeping late on Monday, that's staying at home, and they have a Monday trash, that is your trash day. And it's an important week because if you have lots of fireworks, that is the only week you can put out extra bags of trash in addition to your normal trash. So that's a reminder, you can have up to four 35-gallon trash bags in addition to your containers.
While you're on the topic of fireworks, question I got asked today and I didn't have a good answer for it. Sorry to scream this on you. And since I've been a kid, it's always been what I've known in Carney. But the question is, is why do we allow fireworks to go on sale on the 20th and make people wait eight days before they can shoot them off?
Are you posing that question to me as a historian of the board?
Yes.
So to speak?
Yeah.
There used to be, it used to be narrower where they actually, I think the first time we had the ordinance adopted, we also sold in a narrow window and we shot within the same window. So it was June the 28th. Isn't that right? June the 28th?
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah. And what happened when we increased the license fee to generate some additional revenue and that went to the vote of the people. We actually asked the vote of the people for that and that did pass. And so the fees went to $1,500. Well, to humiliate that with, I think some of the board concurred that it was reasonable to expand the sales to the full State of Missouri limits, which is June the 20th. So that's the earliest you could sell with that type of license is June the 20th. And it certainly is within the board's prerogative to regulate fireworks in all aspects. And you could amend that ordinance if you'd like the city attorney to draft something or I can consult with him if you're considering that. I do know there is an element in our community that would prefer we don't have fireworks discharged.
I was going to say, I think there is an element.
So you will hear from that element.
It's quite vocal.
Yeah. No, absolutely. And it's obviously too late this year to make any changes. I'm not.
It's a good time to make one for next year, though.
Right. I think it's a good time to talk about that. And I, you know, tell any 10, 12-year-old kid, you can buy fireworks today, but oh, by the way, you have to wait eight to nine days and the parents are going to leave the house. They're going to shoot them off. All enforcement will be responding to calls, you know. So just something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that concludes my report.
Move on to public requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, encloses a liquor license application from Cosentino's naming Denise Armond Trout as managing officer. I don't see that she's with us tonight, but I can assure you that she is in compliance with all aspects of our code and we recommend approval.
Any questions or discussions on the request? I'll have to again entertain a motion to approve the Cosentino liquor license request to change the managing officer.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Mayor, the next item of business 5B is consideration for Innovation Fourth Plat. It's enclosed with the staff report on Innovation, which is the final plat for eight industrial lots. At their June the 14th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended on it with a five to zero vote approval of the said plat subject to staff comments. And of course, we have David Pavlich on the line with us, as well as representative from KDC, Shawna Cersei. And we have our liaison from P&amp;Z with us. So Kathy Bargumay, when I contribute to the discussion.
Staff, Pam, do you have anything else to add?
Really nothing additional to add, though. I think the board may have recognized in the packet that this is a reapproval of a plat that has previously been approved. We recommend approval again.
Kathy, do you have anything to add?
I don't. This is pretty easy.
Board, do you have any questions from our executive director? Shawna Cersei is on the line. No questions if you read the ordinance for the first five plats, please.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Innovation Fourth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Take a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Read first, second time by title only.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Innovation Fourth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-ways and easements thereon.
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hold the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The motion unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Shawna. Next, we'll move on to public hearings.
And, Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to hear a rezoning request from Michael Eredia for a 10-unit townhome to be constructed on 201 and 203 East Washington at their public hearing on the June the 14th. Planning and Zoning Commission tabled consideration to their next regular meeting on July the 12th. And because we've advertised and in order for the board to receive a recommendation from P&amp;Z, it is recommended that we continue this hearing that's been scheduled for this evening to the next Board of Alderman meeting following, which would be July the 19th. So we're actually taking our public hearing and we're going to make a motion to continue it rather than table it. We're continuing a public hearing. So those people who would attend on July the 19th would still have an opportunity to legally give you input. That's the motion I'm looking for.
Would you entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the July 19th regular meeting?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to the July 19th regular hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have no old business to discuss this evening, no new business. We do have an executive session noticed up. In accordance with RSMO 610021, the board may go into a closed session during this meeting to discuss matters of litigation, legal actions, and or communication from the city attorney as provided under Section 610021 Subsection 1, and or real estate under Section 610021 Subsection 2, and or employee under 610021. If we can consider a motion to go into an executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hold the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Motion unanimous.
643, we will enter an executive session. We will return to this platform once we have finished to finish up the meeting.
Brian, can you hear us?
I can, welcome back.
Great, we adjourned executive session at 7:16. We'll move on to our next item on the Alderman Discussion, Alderman Barker.
Actually, I have two things that I'd like to speak about this evening. One, I just wanted to let the board know, the Washington Heights Town Homes Planning and Zoning Board was very impressed with this project, but because it's the first time that we've seen a project like this in Kearney, and because it's a planned district, we wanted to make sure that everything, all of the i's were dotted and all the t's were crossed, and we felt there were just a few things that weren't done yet, and so I don't want anybody on this board thinking that the planning and zoning was against it for any reason, it's just we want to see a little more and make sure that we're doing our due diligence to bring the project to the city and do it in the best way that the developer and the city can do it, so.
Yeah, I viewed the meeting and thought that you guys had some good questions, parking and lighting and stuff, and looking forward to the discussion to continue.
As we are, and then I just wanted to give a shout out to the Kearney Enrichment Council. They have been so active in this community, and I believe free moving in the park this Saturday, and there are a lot of other programs, I would really encourage anybody that hasn't gone out and joined their Facebook site or gotten online and seen what's being offered by them, to do that, because it's a very active group in the city, and really, really excited about what they bring to the table.
Alderman Lehman?
Just the Spray Park and the Lines Park has been used very heavily, and before it got aired tonight, I drove down by both parts of it, and very busy, and it's a hot topic on Facebook, and people are enjoying it, you know, the only thing I will say is that, you know, this is brand new, everybody needs to help us keep it new, and, you know, if